All right, um, so, I guess I'm going to end on this.
Albert?
Yeah.
Cooper?
Here.
Ferguson here. Paulie?
Here.
Janelli? Johnston?
Here.
Karan?
Here.
Katrina?
O'Leary?
Here.
Ed Peres? Ross.
I wouldn't start this all by anybody. And thanks for coming. It's time to go. All right, um, today, tonight our recognition is for somebody who's been at the Danbury Public Schools nineteen, 2017, teacher of the year. This gentleman has been John Weber, who I've known for a long time, don't know him personally, I just know him as a teacher, and that January was hell's out. And, um, and Sandy is here, the principal of the school is in, and she's going to speak to, to John Weber in his award, and then, uh, represent, uh, how he works here, and keep himself.
Um, hey, good evening, everybody. I want to first thank Dr. Sal for the surprise tactic this evening, I was letting you know that I was busy speaking, but, um, this is amazing for me. Um, I've worked with John for many years, he's spent thirteen years so far at the Alternative Center for Excellence, and, um, the best way to describe John is that he is solid all the way around. Um, and kids, uh, and sometimes kids at the Alternative Center, uh, are often reluctant to learn, but they're not in John's classes. Um, he has an incredible way of engaging kids in learning, through hands-on activities and through making learning fun. And I'm honored that my office, uh, is right next door to his classroom, so I hear, uh, what's going on. Yes, I do, Joe, I hear everything through those thin walls, uh, in my office, and, uh, and kids are ignited in those rooms. Um, John takes kids on outdoor education trips, hiking, camping, um, backpacking, uh, most recently, he's involved with a, uh, Still, Still River Watershed Project, where kids went out and planted, uh, plants over at Lake Kenosha, he has built vegetable garden beds up at Roddy Middle School, where this summer, if you were up there, you would see the massive vegetables that have been growing, and he has been kind of my right-hand man, uh, since I've been the principal at Aces, and I am just truly grateful and, um, honored to have him work with me. Uh, when we speak with kids, uh, at Aces, uh, they like being in his classes, and I think that that really says a lot, so, um, I'm pleased that he came from a family of teachers, his mom and dad, I know have been, uh, very supportive over the years, he's got beautiful children that are here this evening, and, uh, we are just honored, um, to say that John Weber is teacher of the year this year, so, without any further ado, we should give him one of our applause.
Well, Sandy represents a good, a good, but I don't know how to say the names of them.
Well, it's a pleasure for me to be here tonight and see so many familiar faces, and, but it's especially, um, special because education is just home to all of us. And I know the years that I was involved with the Danbury Public Schools of substitute North Southern City Y PTO and PTO can see. So I know your mom ran out because my son had her at K Street School, um, so it's really special when I saw that you were becoming the teacher of the year. Um, it's, it's really special to have someone that's so dedicated to, it's really tough to, to work with adolescents, which are also working in the middle of a high school where kids need so much. And for you to be able to be a little creative in what you do with your teaching resonates with so many of those, those kids. So on behalf of the Danbury delegation, which I'm here on behalf of, I want to give you a state of Connecticut citation, but, um, on behalf of the General Assembly, and it's presented by myself, Representative Daniel Carter of the Second District, Representative Smith of the Hundred and Eighth District, Representative Parting, Hundred and Seven, Representative Mark Conkey of the One and Ninth, Representative Gottlieb of the One Tenth, and Senator Michael Block of the Twenty-Fourth District. We hereby note to all that the Connecticut General Assembly hereby offers its sincerest congratulations to John Weber, Danbury Teacher of the Year, twenty sixteen, seventeen. In recognition of being awarded Danbury School District's twenty sixteen, seventeen Teacher of the Year, your teaching and leadership style continues to motivate and inspire success in both your students and your colleagues. Today, we celebrate your commitment to education and thank you for your enthusiasm and tireless dedication. Congratulations on the climb, Stephen. The entire members of Pitts End very best wishes on this memorable occasion, and expresses its hope for continued success, and is given this, this thirteenth day of October at the State Capitol in Hartford, and is signed by the President for Pam, Speaker of the House, and Secretary of State. Congratulations.
Sure. First off, the, probably the best part about tonight for me is seeing Deanna here, um, representing us, and as soon as she walked in, Sandy and I looked at each other, and that's, for me, this is the best part of tonight, is, is you. Um, I really have nothing but thanks to say for, because you can't really do, nothing is done in isolation, and there, none of, none of any of this is done without, you know, having a, like, a network of different people. I think a lot of times, people talk about, you know, thanking another teacher, which I have played a thank, and I've spent thirteen years next to Kyle and Colm, and, excuse me, I think it's maybe one of the best teachers that I've ever seen in Danbury. Um, and I've been right next to him every day, taking his brain and asking him, you know, if I can take his stuff, and I go to Kyle and say, "Show me how to make this better," and Kyle does, phenomenal teacher. And there's people all over the district, she's in first grade right now, and she's already had two phenomenal teachers, she had Lisa Capone last year, and she's got Sue Blaser this year, so, I mean, there's teachers all over the place, but, you know, I would say the, probably the, you know, one of the biggest things is, you know, for me, is my wife, uh, teaching at Aces, as Sandy and Dory know, as Deanna and Michael, Michael, Michael know and Glenn and knows, that there's a lot that goes on at Aces outside and after hours, and if you don't have somebody at home that's saying, "Yeah, go leave for three days with me and a six-year-old and a three-year-old at home, and I'm still working a night shift, and we'll somehow juggle out," that's why she's not here now, she's working. Um, you know, I wouldn't be able to do that, I would have to have moved to some other job where it was a little bit more confined or finite with the hours. But there's just, you know, and Sandy is another person I just want to thank, I, when I first started teaching back when they had the best, uh, program, Sandy was my mentor. And then when I went through to do my sixth year, um, at Sacred Hearts, Sandy was still my mentor, you know, and today Sandy is still my mentor. So it's been somebody, even when Sandy was not at Aces, I would call Sandy and say, "Hey, here's the situation, now what do you think about the situation?" Because I, I just value her experience and her opinion, and I knew that she was so genuine, and whatever answer I got was, was the real, was the real answer was coming down to that. Um, and then, you know, the other thing I thought a lot about, in the summer, I may ask it my mom, so, yeah, I thought about these things, you know, not in front of maybe a desk or a computer, but on, riding a mower all day in the sun, and I thought about, you know, thanking other people, and, you know, we had a guy at our school, Rich Torres, who was a safety etiquette. You can't be a good teacher without a guy like Rich Torres, we're currently looking for a safety etiquette now, we had a guy, basically what Rich allowed teachers to do in that building is teach. And, and, and that's not chase people through the hall, and put a fire out here, and put a fire out there, and maybe leave your class because you have to deal with this issue outside of the room and all. Rich took care of all that, so, I mean, I really feel like, you know, I, I've had some success in the last couple of years because Rich was there. He's gone now, so it's a, that's a tough void to fill, we're looking for a person like that, but, and I really, I, I would just say that I have nothing but thanks for, you know, all those different people that have supported me.
Oh, we need to thank you, we need to thank you, John. Also, did you want to introduce your mother?
Sure, this is my daughter Emma, she is at King Street, and that's my father, who taught at Park Avenue, and then Shelter Rock, and then Rogers Park. And my mother started at South Street and then, you know, put her career on hold for a while before she resumed it, um, at King Street. And my wife did the same thing, she's, you know, got her elementary and certification and has not really gone in that direction because it just didn't kind of fit with the family dynamic. And then Marshall is my youngest, he is, he's in.
But that's the lady.
Marshall is great. Marshall is great. I would just like to say thank you.
And thanks to his parents, guys, thanks to his parents, all right? All right, moving along. And, and off you go, that's it.
Sandy, would you like to get?
Yes.
That's all you can imagine. All right. Moving along.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Sandy.
Hi.
Nice meeting you. Before we go on, um, any further, there's somebody else that, you know, I'd like to recognize as a young member of the audience, um, on the project. Would you send them, how should you introduce yourself for the project, about it?
Uh, hi, everybody, I'm Jack Doran, I'm here for Boy Scouts of America, for my citizenship in the community near that, I'm just going to observe all of the, uh...
All right, um, before we start, we need to go, wishing to address the Board of Education, are assigned, I really do that, right? And, uh, because we welcome the public participation, I don't know, there's something wrong with my mic, tomorrow, I'm very sorry, everybody, it's because this microphone is so close to me, and I can hear it when I say, "For a change." It sounds like you're wrong, sorry. The Board welcomes public participation, mass speakers please limit their comments to three minutes, because no other objective comments of school operations and programs are concerning them. For the matter of it, any expression of personal complaints, detrimental comments on behalf of the Board of Education personnel and students are against any person commenting with a degree of expertise. Signed up, we have. Phyllis. Phyllis, I can't pronounce her, I, I just, A.I.M.?
Hey.
A.I.M., okay. I'm sorry. You can't hear me?
It's actually very muffled.
Okay, muffled. I'm sorry, please have a seat, pause and introduce yourself and, and, um, this is Phil.
Hey, hi.
Can you hear me?
Yes. I can hear you.
Okay. I can hear you. Just right down. I think I'm having a personal problem. So, Vicki Moore, Labor Superintendent, Pastor Rowan, Deputy Superintendent of Last, Teachers, Students, and Citizens of Danbury. We the Greater Danbury Chapter of the National Association. We the Great, Greater Danbury Chapter of the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People, the N.W.A.C.P., are here tonight to discuss the hiring of ethnic minorities by the Danbury Public School System as teachers, as administrators, and as educational professionals. Our children are going to live in a world that is increasingly diverse, and it is our job to prepare them to be comfortable and successful in that world. In order to do that, it is to their advantage to receive their education from a faculty that reflects that, that diversity. Our children need to be well-adjusted and comfortable in the kind of society in which they will live. As school superintendent Sal has noted, the ratio of white to non-white students in the Danbury Public School, School System is not close to fifty-fifty. During the educational process, students naturally form mentor, mentoring, and role model relationships with some of their teachers, and we owe it to our children to provide them exposure to a diverse selection from which they can find those to whom they best relate. We just heard from, um, the Teacher of the Year who talked about mentoring, how he was able to go into different people and, um, be mentored. Our students today eat the same. For all, for all these, for all these reasons, the Danbury School System needs to diversify its teachers and staff. In a twenty fourteen article in The Loose Time, Superintendent Pastor Rowan expressed difficulty recruiting minority faculty and administrators. The Danbury area, N.W.A.C.P., is willing and qualified to provide assistance in this area. The N.W.A.C.P. is a national organization, and this is far from a unique problem. We can draw upon the resources of both the state and national organization for guidance and assistance to find qualified minority candidates for current and future opening. We already have in place an education committee that has worked with the school board on various issues in the past, and is willing to assist with the recruitment, interviewing, and retention of qualified minority teachers, administrators, and professionals. We all share a common interest in seeing that our children receive the very best education we can provide. And that is why we are bringing these suggestions to the school board. To be more specific, here are some of our ideas. Identify and address barriers to hiring minority candidates. Develop and share a plan for recruiting qualified minority professionals. Define a specific matrix to measure our effectiveness, including statistical breakdowns and student surveys. Set up recruitment booths at job fairs of historically back colleges and universities, and I believe there's going to be one at Yale on December first and second. Develop relationships with education departments of local colleges and universities to recruit minority interns. Above all, we want to emphasize that we see this not as a racial issue or problem, but rather as an effort to improve the education of all of our chil, of all of our students, and that we wish to work with the Danbury Public School System for the benefit of all. Please let us know how we can help.
All right, um, like we said, I don't want to be all stripped and damp, is there anybody else that would like to speak, anyone in the first or second row? Anyone in the third row? Anyone in the fourth or fifth row? Anyone in the room you'd like to speak, besides us? Senior or junior, to the consent calendar.
That the Board of Education approved the items on the consent calendar, and that the sixteen dash one thirty-one through sixteen dash one thirty-three has recommended.
Second to that, any questions, eight seconds. Senior or junior?
Aye.
Answers? Okay, um, going into our presentation, um, and, uh, should I get in the room?
In the rest of the room.
Oh, I'm, and you're here, I mean, this is definitely you.
So, on September twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth, teachers Kyle Dracula and John Weber took twelve A students on the first outdoor education trip of the year. Students hiked the Appalachian Trail, camped out overnight, and had a successful trip. Like John mentioned, he goes out for a couple of days and comes back. Students at Aces participated in the suicide prevention walk on Sunday, September eighteenth, at Terry Wild Park. Students at Aces also participated in a collaboration with the Westcon Education Department on September twenty-first at the Westcon Student Center. Westcon Education Professor Darrell Shaw and retired Aces teacher Nancy Berman facilitated the event where students shared out thoughts on what makes a great teacher. Students at Aces had an eighty-eight attendance, percent attendance rate for participation of the month of September. We are pleased as this is an improvement from last September and in alignment with our school-wide goal of improving attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism. Students in John Weber's class, as Sandy mentioned, are participating in, in a regional collaborative with the Still River Watershed Project, which promotes river and lake cleanup to his ends and protect our environment. And that's all I have to say today.
Okay, that was very well done, I just want to clarify something, you're Deanna?
Yes, Deanna Hannah.
Yeah, thank you, because you didn't say your name.
Oh, sorry.
No, no, just apologize, it's fine, thank you very much, very well done.
You're welcome, thank you.
You're welcome. Are there any free, uh, representatives who would like to speak? I guess everybody else is ready to come in.
We didn't know we had a, uh, assembly.
How we doing here? Just up, four.
Joe, is this where, um?
Yeah, right inside.
Just got to warm up.
There you go, you got, uh...
Oh, yeah, I know.
I need a little...
Nope.
Um, I think I'll, I'll stay seated here, um, just so that I can use the microphone, just see if I can get the slideshow. Okay, um, so, I'm, for those of you out in the audience, um, my name is Kim Thompson, and I'm the Human Resources Director and the Legal Counsel to the Board, and I was asked tonight to speak with you a little bit about, um, our minority hiring efforts, and where we've been, where we hope we're headed, um, in the time that comes. Um, and I take the, the comments from tonight to heart, um, this is actually a topic that, um, we've been talking about for quite some time, and have been working with the State Department of Education and some of our colleagues in other districts. Um, I'm trying to, how to wrestle with this issue of, um, whether or not, um, it's a, it's an achievable goal to have a demographic of teachers that mirror our student population, and how we try to do our best to get there. Um, so, away we go. Okay, so, um, this is this year's hiring, you'll remember that from year to year, I will come to you and talk with you about the entering class, and, and give you kind of a snapshot of where we are. Um, our total minority hiring this year of certified staff only was about thirteen percent. Um, that's about, if I can go to the next page and then I'll come back, you can see the top line, the purple line, is our overall, um, minority hiring, and then it's broken out by, um, categories underneath, but you can see that, um, we, we were a bit behind where we were last year, um, we had peaked at about seventeen percent, but thirteen percent for us is actually generally, um, not a bad, not a bad showing. Um, part of the obstacles, or some of the obstacles we face this year is a lot of our hiring is done very late in the season. Um, I think we thought we were going to have a smaller cohort, and even right up until the first day of new teacher orientation, um, we ended up blowing that number out of the water in the weeks that followed with some last-minute resignations, so, um, I think some of our efforts, um, you know, they came late in the season this year because we weren't anticipating such a big class. Um, but you can see there that, again, if you take that purple line as the peak, um, the, the next line down, and I'll talk a little bit about it specifically, is our Hispanic and Latino hiring, um, the green line, Asian, and the, um, red line, Black African-American. Now, also, um, be aware that these are only, um, self-disclosed, so we do have some categories where people just don't answer or don't reply with any ethnicity at all, so this is just from those who have self-disclosed. Now, when we compare that to our student population, um, I, I sort of changed the slide a little bit this year to make it go horizontal, um, starting from the bottom and working up, you can see, from two thousand twelve to two thousand and sixteen, a lot of our growth has appeared in Hispanic, Latino student population, um, and we've seen some slight declines in some of the other categories, um, but you can see that that area of growth really for us has been in that particular area. Um, and otherwise, we, we've been somewhat, somewhat static, I would say. That gives you an idea just over the last four years of where our student population has been. Now, um, this side on the left, what I was trying to do is comparing the percentage by, again, by ethnicity of students to minority teachers. Now, the, the, um, high on the right-hand side is all teachers, so not just a new class of stu, of teachers coming in, but all teachers. Um, generally, what I can say to sort of give you some overview, you can see where we've got about, just shy of a ten percent, um, staffing of minority teachers of all, in all categories. Um, so, our new teacher groups are coming in with a higher, um, ratio, and, but it's going to take some time, we have nine hundred and forty teachers, so it's going to take some time for those numbers to really have an impact on the whole, and that's why I think you, you see what you do on the right. Um, and again, on the left, you see, um, that the, the demographics of our student population really, um, are in the categories that you see there. So, we've got some work to do for sure, um, but the question that I think we're all struggling with is, will we ever get to a point where we do have forty-two percent, um, white Caucasian teachers, forty-four percent Hispanic and Latino teachers, and again, um, Black and African-American teachers at seven percent, and eighty-five percent. Um, and again, I'm, um, just to give you perspective, I'm, um, kind of generalizing the categories, we have an awful lot of other... ...categories, I take sort of the bigger ones there, but that's really the issue. Um, so, just to kind of define the scope of the problem, when I say we've been working on this for a while, um, you heard me the last two years talk about participation in the Human Capital Cohort. Um, the State Department of Education has been working to pull together superintendents and human resources directors from a variety of, um, locations, and put us all in one place to talk about problems of practice. Um, when Dr. Sal and I started that process two years ago, we chose, uh, the issue of minority hiring and staffing as our problem of practice. So we've really been working on how do we resolve this, this issue, um, in a way to the benefit of our, our students, because certainly we've all agreed that we're trying to create as many role model opportunities as we can, and it's part of our continuing effort to close the achievement gap. You can see from this slide, um, this is actually a brand-new study that's just come out, um, that was done in collaboration with the National Council... out, um, that was done in collaboration with the National Council on Teacher Quality. Um, and they're focusing on, I think, what all of, um, us are starting to focus on, which is that the number of minority teachers across the workforce nationwide is only about eighteen percent. Um, and part of the issue that they identified in the survey is what I'll refer to by shorthand as this pipeline issue, um, that college graduation rates, in their study, they were seeing that minority groups' college graduation rates were on the decline, and that, that more significantly, I think, the number of minority students who choose to pursue careers in teaching is on the decline. So, that's a place where I think a lot of work, um, continues to, to be done. Um, to look at it a different way, the numbers that I, um, could find available from the state of Connecticut were from two thousand thirteen, so the numbers are a bit skewed here, but you can see, um, where red represents the Danbury, um, ratio, and blue across the state of Connecticut for certified teachers. So, um, certainly, um, where is more, I would agree, um, with the woman who spoke earlier, I would agree that there is some more work to be done to try to bring parity, particularly with regard to Black and African American students and teachers. Um, the other areas you can see, I think, are, are part a reflection of the demographic of this community, and that's why you see the numbers the way that they are. Um, so, the next logical place, if you do, um, if you do agree with this assertion that applicant pools are part of the issue, are there a number of, um, teachers of color coming out of teacher preparation programs and flooding into our, um, pools of applicants? So, one of the things I did look at, um, was, what do those applicant pools look like, and what do they look like this year in particular? Uh, and at the elementary education level, so I pulled out all applicants for music, for art, for elementary classrooms, um, for specialists, math specialists, literacy specialists, and you can see the demographics, um, as reflected there in the pool for those applicants from, I picked the period June first to October first, because that's really when we saw the biggest spike in applicants. Um, so, again, you can see, one of the things that I think should give us all pause is how do we raise the number of teachers of color who are interested in coming and applying to Danbury and coming to work here? Because that number really lagged behind, um, for that category of Black and African American teachers. Um, to divert for one minute, in the areas of special education, particularly at the elementary level, the candidate pools are nearly uniformly Kelly Knotts, because we see them a lot, predominantly female, predominantly white, non-Hispanic category, um, of applicants. And, um, so, again, that's an area where, um, it is a shortage area, it's difficult to find teachers with experience, um, let alone a diverse pool of applicants. Um, so that's one of the things that, that we'll be looking at certainly going forward. Similarly, you can see again, in this demographic, um, in the secondary area, um, T-School and bilingual are the hardest areas for us to fill, and again, um, you can see, and it, it makes some sense, if our predominantly spoken language here is either Spanish or Portuguese, the pool of applicants who are Hispanic is, is much larger even than any other category. Um, but when we move to the secondary content areas like math, chemistry, secondary special education, again, we're seeing a very small pool of applicants. Um, and that should give us pause to try to determine why that is and what we can do to try to fix that. So, in working with the Human Capital cohort, we tried to identify whether there were particular barriers or factors that might be affecting what we have here. Um, one of the obvious questions is, are we, do we have a teacher retention issue? Are we losing a lot of teachers of color for one reason or another? Um, I will tell you, for the last couple of years, I've looked at that number and really didn't see any kind of patterns or, or anything that gave me pause. This year, I will tell you that we have lost quite a few bilingual and T-School teachers to other cities. Um, now, one of the things that I'll talk about in the action item is how do we get at the information about why that is? Um, but we've lost them to districts that pay more, we've lost them to districts that are looking to build their bilingual capacity, and we have some extremely well-trained, extremely well-experienced T-School bilingual teachers, and those folks are writing and taking elsewhere. The next bullet point talks about, and I'll touch on it for just a minute, minority representation in the administrator group. Um, last year, that number was at seventeen percent, it's actually edged up to, um, just about twenty percent now, when I just looked through. Um, and one of the things that we are proud of in that group is continuing to provide leadership opportunities, um, not only for those folks, but also for, um, folks who are in the teacher ranks with aspirations to become administrators. And so we continue to try to create and work on our aspirant program, and I know, I think Bill has put some information out tonight on what that program looks like, um, but that is, um, an area that, that gives me less pause than in the teacher and certified staff area. So, um, we've set some goals for ourselves, we've been working on them really since the spring, um, and they were derived from this collaborative process that we've been engaged in. Um, obviously, one of our largest priorities is to continue to support continued minority hiring into open positions in ratios that drive the overall workforce to better reflect the demographics of students. Um, it needs to be a high priority, it needs to continue to be a high priority, um, and we need to try to find ways around the obstacles to that. Um, the State Department of Education has made quite a few inroads, I think, in the last year or two, to continue to explore why the pool of talented, diverse educators in these educator prep programs is not more diverse, um, and I know that, they've made that a priority. I go to a lot of Alliance District meetings with Sarah Barzee, the Chief Talent Officer, and we're talking a lot about what the State Department of Education can do to try to increase the pool and the interest in teaching, um, for teachers of color. And, thirdly, um, to the extent that we are not going to get there overnight, I don't think any of us in any of these districts, and this is a problem that is, is really across the state, I don't think any of us think that we're going to get to these ratios that we're talking about quickly, um, if ever. And so, we have talked about using this cultural competency idea, this idea of educating our current teachers about what it means to be a, a child of color in this district, what sort of, um, what sort of responsive tools can we give teachers so that they can start to bring, um, something else to the table for students that, that they wouldn't otherwise? And so we've been working with Education Connections, they've done some really good work on, um, some training programs and, and on this culturally responsive education idea. Um, and one of the things we did was start to roll that out with some of our paraeducators this year, to do a brief training with them. We're looking at a tool for administrators that they can use as they go in to evaluate other teachers and, and colleagues, that they can start to infuse their assessments of performance with this culturally responsive piece, um, because that's something else that I think, um, we need to bring to the fore. So, um, what have we done nuts and bolts? So, um, in order to meet the first goal, or to continue to strive to meet the first goal of supporting continued minority hiring, um, we've done a few things. The, um, I, I do intend to get to the, um, fair that you talked about at Yale with the historic black colleges and universities. We did go, Dr. Sal and I, to, um, a session that was up, up in Hartford last fall, and made some connections, um, and, and had some really good conversations, actually, with, um, some of the administrators in those institutions about how do we, um, how do we bring folks to this part of the world? And this is sort of a, a distance from, um, where some of these teacher preparation programs are. And, um, some of the conversations, we have talked about how, um, teachers particularly tend to go back to where home is for them, um, and tend to go, I think they said, within a thirty...
Eighty miles.
Eighty mile radius. So that for us says that some of the places we really should be looking are places like University of Delaware, um, places that are not so-so far afield from here, um, that we can try to meet that concern, that, you know, no one wants to leave the family and move halfway across the country, but how can we encourage folks to move to Connecticut? Um, we, this year, launched, uh, an initiative in Puerto Rico. Uh, we made contact with an educational consultant who actually had a connection to one of our teachers here, and she, um, on our behalf, attended a job fair in Puerto Rico. Um, I know Kelly did some interviewing, um, we did some Skype interviewing with candidates and, and, um, tried to use the distance, um, piece, or minimize the distance piece as we did this recruiting effort. I can't say it yielded great results, but it was the first time that we had been through this, and so I think that's another, um, easy way for us to continue to try to gain exposure in, in places that we might not otherwise be looking for candidates. Um, we're continuing to try to make, um, connections with local teacher prep programs, particularly where they have English Language Learner certification programming, um, and with institutions that we have a real good relationship already, like University of Bridgeport. Um, so those are pipeline opportunities that I think we can be better at. Um, we sent quite a few administrators to UConn this year. Um, for two years now, we've started to really make some, put some time and attention into that, um, recruiting fair. It's, it's a long day, it's, it's sort of speed dating, but it, I think it's, it was a good place for us to see a lot of very well-qualified teacher candidates, um, so we'll continue to do that as well. Um, some brainstorming that Dr. Sal and I have done is whether or not we can continue to provide enhanced recruiting benefits for folks to come to this area. Um, we've talked a little bit with Westcon about tuition discounts, and teachers are going to need to have master's degrees, and that can be a very expensive proposition. So, um, as we try to appeal to a more diverse, um, category of, of candidates, that's one of the things that I think might be real beneficial. Um, there are currently mortgage incentives, relocation assistance, um, of some form, but different incentives for people who work in, um, Alliance districts like ours, and, um, so we continue to try to highlight those as we go through the recruitment process. And third on this list is, um, we have not in a long time taken a look at that personnel policy, um, which is our affirmative action and hiring policy. Um, it had a commitment, or made a commitment to a committee on diversity, which hasn't been up in quite a long time. Um, I would like to see if we can reinstitute something like that, so we can continue to have conversations that are a little bit more in-depth than, than what we can have tonight, but where we can continue to brainstorm about how to make this a place where we can really draw a more, um, rich pool of applicants, and I think that a committee like that would help. Um, I've had several conversations with NEA Danbury, and they actually do have, they have just recently identified someone to participate in that kind of a process, so I'd like to get that rolling as well. What else can we do to expand the pool in local teacher preparation programs? Can we have any influence on that? Um, and we'll continue to work with the State Department of Education on how to do that. Um, one of the things that Dr. Glass launched a couple of years ago, um, was this minority and bilingual teacher pipeline program that we worked on with Westcon, where we identified students, um, from Danbury High School who might have expressed some sort of an interest in teaching. Um, and we tried to connect them with a, with a meaningful class, and then had them come and work in summer school, or had them participate in some way. Some of them, I'll be honest, have been screaming from the profession after their experience, but that has really provided some, some very rich feedback about how, what a wonderful career, um, that they hadn't thought of pursuing before. And, um, unfortunately, that has fallen the way of, of grant cutting. Um, we did have a grant to do that work a couple of years ago. Um, we don't have it this year for the first time, so we're really, um, we're struggling a little bit with how to make that happen, but I think that, if anything, what we've seen is that part of the way to solve or start to solve this problem is to grow from within and to identify kids from this area, students from this area, who want to stay in their home environment, who want to become teachers, um, and how to help them to get there. Similarly, um, the next item is, we do have, um, a very diverse and rich population of paraeducators in the district. And one of the things that I've been trying to do in the last couple of years is to continue to push the professional development piece with them, to get them meaningful professional development that will get them thinking about a career maybe in teaching. Um, there, again, used to be grant money, uh, for English Language Learner teachers, paraeducators that wanted to go into English Language or bilingual teaching, and that grant money does not appear to be available, I just actually spoke with Augusto recently about that. Um, but again, if we can find ways to, um, encourage and mentor and, and try to, um, nudge, um, current employees that may be minority teacher candidates, that's something that is, is something that we can do in house that I think would be very effective. Um, we also, I've worked a lot with our Central Registration Center on identifying, you know, those families where someone may come in that has experience teaching in another country, um, or may have other sort of life experience that might make them a good candidate to participate in some sort of employment in the schools. And so we, we are looking at that as a potential resource as well for, um, candidates. And finally, um, the last, the third goal was this culturally responsive educational practices. Once we, um, a- as we get the ball rolling, or continuing to roll, hopefully, further downhill, um, if, as we start to really, I think, build a meaningful hiring plan, um, this is the other piece that we're going to have to do, coincidentally, we're going to have to do it at the same time, um, because right now, as I said, we do have over nine hundred teachers, and, and we need to talk about how we can continue to give them tools to deal with the changing demographic in the district. So, um, I had alluded earlier to these cultural competency workshops that we've been rolling out for non-certified staff. Um, we'd like to roll them out for administrators. And the third item there, um, again, the, the Yancy Forum, that was something that Sarah Barzee did bring to us, to ask us if we were interested in participating. Um, and it's a, it's an off-site, multiple session, sort of a mentoring, um, process, so that teachers of color in our district had a place to go to talk about professional and personal success strategies. Um, and so, we're looking to see whether that program will be running again, whether we can fund part of it with NEA Danbury, um, because obviously it would be a great benefit to their membership as well. So we're looking at that as another avenue, again, to, to sort of march hand in hand with the hiring piece. And the last piece, um, next steps, we'll start to gear up for a new hiring season in probably four or five months, um, as we look back and do sort of a, um, maybe not the right word, but a postmortem on the last session of hiring. Um, we're looking at what else do we need to work on to be even more effective. Um, some of the things we're exploring is, for example, is our decentralized hiring process working? You know, we have all individual buildings and principals pulling applications for their own buildings, and does it make sense to try to centralize it? And we've gone back and forth, um, with different models over the past few years and have not hit upon quite the right one yet, but that's something we'll think about. We need to be implementing an exit survey, and that's something we'll start this year on, where are folks going? Um, why are they leaving? And is there, um, any way to assess whether it's because the environment here is not one that is satisfying or professionally rewarding or personally rewarding? Or is it, um, income? Is it, is it money? Is it something else that, that we haven't yet identified? Um, and finally, how do we know? What are the metrics we put in place to determine if it's working? And I think certainly we'll continue to see those numbers hopefully rise, um, in, in a positive direction. So, that's what we've been doing, um, recently. I know Dr. Sal is also planning a trip to University of Delaware.
Delaware State.
Delaware State, coming up. Um, and we'll continue to explore, um, some of those connections that we have been making to see what we can do to try to really, um, I think, encourage folks to come and apply and, and see what we have here, because we have something that's pretty special. Anybody have any questions?
When we met with the, uh, with East Heart, uh...
Yeah, East Heart, right.
Yeah, we met in East Heart. We talked about the success of relocation to the traditionally black colleges, also to Puerto Rico and recruiting there. Puerto Rico is an area where the economy is down, they're having challenges paying their staff, so there's a real need for folks to relocate. The younger the, 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 this professionalism in Puerto Rico, um, less likely to come. Those that are interested in coming, interesting enough, we found out from the recruiter, those are families. Um, we've worked with the Hispanic community as well, with, with the African-American community, where we have transition periods of time where people can introduce themselves to a group, we have folks that will take them in. Trouble with the traditional colleges, the, the black traditional colleges, is that they will, they being, the graduates usually will stay if they major in that area instead of relocating here. That's why we chose to recruit Dr. Park, being from, uh, Delaware State. We have a number of our folks from Jersey, Connecticut, New York, that go there, and they have a wide variety of, of majors in education, with a good, with a good representation. So we're trying to focus things on there, as well as our local students. And we, we work with, uh, uh, Westcon, uh, UConn, um, University of Bridgeport, all of them. I teach at Sacred Heart, in the administrative class, I have forty students in my class right now, and one minority student in there, one minority, and I've been doing it fifteen years. If I had two or three in there, I'm, I'm amazed, you know? For some reason, folks aren't coming out of our profession. They've got to deal, they've got to deal with that in terms of aspirants and building that up. Still, there is any reason why we cannot recruit, this is a, an area of colleges, it's close to New York. Still, there is no reason why we cannot recruit. This is a, an area of colleges, it's close to New York. The economy is good, the housing, Fairfield is affordable. It's making the transition, making people comfortable. That was the advice we got from the visit we had in East Hartford with the traditional colleges. So I think the effort needs to still, we still have, she didn't mention, we post in the colleges, we do all of that stuff. But you got, that's why I went down and meet the folks at Delaware State, St. John's, Westchester.
College of New Rochelle. College of New Rochelle as well.
Stay local and then try to recruit these folks as we come in. One thing we haven't done, and I, and I've stayed aware, we don't go to these places with a contract in hand. I don't know if, and that's sometimes our, we want principals meet them and do some teaching so we can view them. So we talked about giving a tentative contract. They've asked us to stay away from that because we can't make those agreements. So to get out this fall, second semester, we have some positions open. And what tends to happen in our district, if you get in, it's a long term sub. And you do a good job, it tends to hire that person. And you know, it's good and it's bad. So what we've got to do is make sure we're diligent the entire year when the positions come up, that we're mindful of who we put in those positions. Because that's a great, that's probably the best interview you can have. Sitting in school, working with parents and kids, make connections. So those are one of the end, end sort of things that we have to work with. We have the, 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 Friday. Last Friday, we have some, last Friday, and Middletown and Merrittan, going to take a trip down to some of the colleges as well. They are having the same challenges we're having currently. Although Bridgeport, I didn't hear much from them in terms of their issues in art, but it seems to be Merrittan ourselves and Bristol's having some problems and Middletown. We're talking about combining and working together in terms of trying to, you know, put our efforts together and getting out there and bringing, bringing folks to the state and trying to share in that, in the, in the process. So I think we've got multiple things we're trying to do.
The only other thing I would add too that we didn't talk about at all about, but that has been a factor is the State Department of Education has been very receptive to things like reciprocity of certification. So when we have kids coming out of teacher programs from other states, there are often issues about their certification here in Connecticut. And there have been some pretty high barriers to entry on the certification issue. So we've been talking a lot with them about that. And I think that the State Department of Education has made a real commitment to try to resolve some of those issues.
There are a lot of advantages, no question. I mean, that's one of the things we're having with Delaware State in terms of exams. The thing with Puerto Rico for us, being a territory, we don't have a lot of issues in terms of accreditation and certification and recognition. So that is a better way for us to go there. But the State Department has noticed a stated problem, reciprocal kinds of activities. So they're much more mindful of adjusting their timelines, at least giving people time to come and do the work, so.
Thank you. Any questions?
I just want to thank Ken and Dr. Sal and the staff for putting the presentation together tonight. It's very important that people are here and see what you are doing or attempting to do and try to make sure that we bring some staff in that other children can look at and says, you know, someone here looks like him. And I ask the questions, I can't begin another summer of the full general vacation. And I just want to say thank you. And I think it's very important that, you know, we stay informed as a board as to, not telling you how you do the job, but you know, we know and I know that, you know, a group of people were brought up from the South when Howard Swoopman was human resources director. And a lot of those people have been hired. And our numbers are very, are getting smaller and smaller. So I just want to thank you for the presentation tonight and keep us informed.
And we'll work with both the groups that we've talked about, I think we'll work together and create this committee that.
Does anyone else have any questions? Right, I have one that I'd like to ask. If you call me, I don't need to be asked one, I'll probably, I'll probably.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anybody else like, or no?
Well, maybe we could attach to the minutes and please everybody guess. It'd be a good idea.
At the Board of Education approved the 2017-2018 school calendar in accordance with 16-134.
Second item by the pass. Any questions, please?
Was this week the regional calendar, pretty much?
Pretty much, yes. We've given some parents, like this week, for example, we wanted to take off, go on the state, the Jewish holiday. So we have some variances that we're permitted to work on.
But it's pretty much flat.
Oh, at this point, yes.
Any other questions? Someone else in the panel, David?
Hi.
Their parents waiting for them.
At the Board of Education approved the 2016-2017 superintendent's goals and objectives in accordance with 16-135.
Anything else? Any questions?
Just a comment. We received the growth. If you're faster, you can make the, look a little bit bitter, you like?
I was just noticing the same thing. I was trying to get on page four, you know. I will do that.
Try to read him, try to read him in the door.
No, it's not all. I didn't see the word draft.
Yeah, we can see that. Alrighty.
In my city, you're going to die.
Okay. It's such a pain, this one another. Okay, all right. So, is there any other questions, Al and David?
Hi.
You want to let, can we?
The growth goal one is aligned to everyone's growth in the district. We've aligned our two managers, I think I've gone over with you, our focus. And all of the improvement plans are aligned with Bill's goals, my goals, your goals that you've set. So it doesn't sound much to me, but the multiple year goals are really important for us. They've stayed constant. What's changed are the activities to get there, to make the alignment that we have. We have new programs in mathematics this year. We have new programs at the elementary that were, we've instituted. So that's going to be a big part of our conversation. The real focus is on goal one for us this year. I know Joe is working on three with the multiple year goals for him. That's been somewhat challenging, but I think now with situation, context, it'll be more. Yeah, that'll make it much more plausible for us to do, predicting our amounts. And family and community engagement is a big one. And Anne has taken a real big shoe role in that area for us. And the account of the organization learning professionals. At some point in that development, when Bill does the presentation and care on the data, we're also going to put this adherence goal that you all approve for us so that we actually have some continuity of thinking and strategically we're ruling in the same direction in the district. But I thank you for that.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, we thought, I was trying to be the third, you just walked away in a class, right?
I remember.
I'm not going to say. Thank you. All right, all right.
At the Board of Education accepted Danbury Head Start of Northern Fairfield County State Project Number 034-0133N. School construction project as complete and authorizes the superintendent of school to certify and execute the SCG-049F form in accordance with 16-136.
Okay, 32nd. That goes. Any discussion, any questions? Okay, seeing them quickly, Al and David? I'm sorry, did you agree? Not for you because it's not what I wanted to say, so I'm not here.
No.
That's good you can do. Next.
At the Board of Education approved the food service agreement for the CIFC's Head Start program in accordance with 16-137.
Anything else? Any other questions? Yeah, here we go.
I just, I mean, looking, I'm looking at the payment schedule. Why would, why would breakfast for an adult be less than a child or lunch be more?
Yeah, those, those are additional meals in the contract. This is standard rate we have at Head Start for years on the reimbursement pieces that we get. The adult meals typically aren't, breakfasts typically happen and the children, the lunch meal is typical. I can't actually spend a dollar twenty-five on the adult breakfast. That is kind of, that's a contract we have.
Is it by reimbursement levels?
It's also policy reimbursement.
It's by nature. They, Head Start actually gives us these businesses.
We've raised them the last few years. This is still keeping in line with where we are.
Clearly a self-sufficient program and pays for itself.
We just, we just, it's a service we provide to them and we do make, it's a small marginal profit that we make from the program back, that's all. Because there's so people that are in those locations at Head Start.
Just, just surprising. From looking at the matrix, then it's.
How many children are we free to do this program, Jeff? Or if you don't have the numbers.
I have exact numbers, class. Head Start in the department itself is about 280 students that are in, in, in at least the Head Start operation total. I don't have the latest enrollment numbers.
It's no longer on our.
Yeah, it's not on our enrollment data, but it was about 280, 287, six on mile, we actually split off.
Maybe check, we'll bring it back.
Any other questions, please?
Okay.
We need to vote on it. We did.
Exactly, discussed.
But I thought, right, this is the question. Al and David?
Hi. Hi.
Good points.
Okay, enrollment data, as you know, the October 1 is the official time for our enrollment. Based on that, all of our grants are going to be based on this. Magnet School or Title I, everything that you do. If you go down to the bottom of the page, you can see the sense of where we're at. 1016, the growth at the elementary, middle school, high school, 78, 89, middle school, and then 369 giving us a 1.83% increase. Depending how these, how these classrooms or these students were distributed, we had to add teachers based on the numbers in the class. It could have exceeded 20, we had some that were running 20 and 29s. Well, we added a few students, so we had to create those extra sections. But we've been staying right at 1.5, 2% a year. As you know, this year, we required the group to do the demographic study for us. It's going to impact, we're moving up to per grade level, into 900s pretty, pretty much. You know, we're going to be a primary high school, but we're going to have some real challenges at the elementary. Joe, Bill, I don't have any comments.
I just highlighted the big, the big movement in some of the schools, Ellsworth, South Street, Shelter Rock. I mean, it's pretty, you know, five, almost 6% movement in South Street. That's, that's pretty remarkable. That's been a pretty flat growth school, which is concerning. The drop in Pembroke, I wouldn't get too excited about, there's a special population out there and there is some flux in and outside of that. The 5% drop isn't really alarming. The only neat thing I think in some respect is that two middle schools are aligning now, Rogers Park and Rogers. So they're starting to come into parity, which is, which is a good thing.
If I could ask Joe, has, has, has the union, teachers union been cooperative as far as possible transfers amongst schools? If that population shift is there?
As far as.
So say, say their school, they're, they're currently in Pembroke, which is a declining level.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Teachers are reassigning. We, we have to do that in some cases.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, we're very close. Remember I said we're not adding until we know in August? So there's folks on notice that were going to have to be redesigned. What happened at those schools, we added, so they, they wound up staying. But they've been very open. We have a process that we established and who and how they go, that's the only thing we follow. The other thing, if you look at kindergarten, you can see it, we earned it at 874, which I find interesting here. All the others, we're looking at 900s and 9, I, 9, that was at 874. We still feel we were going to grow some more.
We just seem to add all year long.
Particularly for kindergarten.
If you look at even our October into our April numbers, bro, we'll still add another probably 75 kids just going through the season.
But that's about the only number. Bill, any comments?
The only thing, Joe, or everything, the only thing that I want to bring to the board's attention, we did mention possibly a workshop, I can't remember, it was so convenient, the concern about Rogers Park and the poverty level. If we hit the federal threshold, we automatically have to provide Title I services, which will dramatically draw down the money available to all other Title I schools. As turns out, as of October 1, we did not hit the threshold. So we just kind of really decided to leave on that.
Did we add any Title I schools?
No.
My poverty level is up 51%.
50, I think I was saying 54.
54.
53, 54.
Okay. Stay tuned. This is our, coming up, this is the, coming up is our fifth year of the.
Redissue.
We did a block of rediscipline, so with the study, I don't know, we'll start looking at it. This did cause us to add, how many buses?
Four.
Four buses.
A lot of, some of the shifting we saw on West Side, those hundred kids moving up the West Side campus really impacted us. We really had, those two buses really had to get out just to West Side alone. That was, that was all unforeseen. It was really going to, the way those hit.
Shelter Rock portal, good news.
Good news. Contract's moving along, working closely with Corporation Council's office. We'll just finish up last, it's contractor there. We'll get, you're pretty tight construction timeline and everything else. The good news is his bonding and all those pieces are actually in place ahead of even the final contract signing. He's moving right along with our colors. Actually, they, they tried to deliver some of the furniture the other day, so it won't be long. Ouch. Next meeting, a show of much tighter construction timeline, that's actually very clear. Yeah, good news in Portland.
High school, I gotta tell you, it has been, seems, I mean, the construction workers, the cooperation, it's just been, um, just been direct. And they actually did the footings there.
Yeah, the footings are going in.
Going for the cross, so that's been.
Yeah, and Tom and Tom and company are going to, going to work like usual up there, so hopefully we'll get.
You guys are actually jinxing it.
But we need to say that out loud because there was concern about the playing fields. It's just been from Andy's there, things gone very well, very, very easy to communicate with. Very mindful of the students.
Results have been good, everyone in the brand.
They're most terrific, so. Really fortunate, yeah. As a result of our foreign drips, remember last year we had the issue of going trans? I've made some modifications to a form to do some back checking of our vetting of the travel agent and added insurances. Those will be included in our new, in our rights to the policy I'll bring to you. Because that will determine how trip is guided. So that'll be funded, but we're going to start this form right now. So as you can see, I'll have to do some vetting of folks. And in fact, the trip is canceled, one purpose is made. There's also, we investigated type of insurance for the cost parents, a little bit more. But you know, it's, it's a noteful kind of a, as best as possible, you know, all insurance is all have their little image. But it does protect our students and sponsors, I agree with that. So I'm happy about that. Someone had asked a question, I just want to bring it back. Why didn't the trip go off? The sponsors weren't going to take trips. They were told not to by the travel agent because it would affect their reimbursement. We'd asked the question, the board had asked. So in our conversation with the attorney, we were covering that area as well. We are working with the state's attorney, they're picking up our case along with Amity, and they are trying to make some inroads in with the, the travel agency. We are not meaningful parentship, because we don't have the complete picture, we're telling the parents what we do know, and we're doing a survey now, we were asked by the state's attorney and our attorney to look at some variables, and right now, we're collecting that information. When we add everything, maybe the parents will come to you and walk about what your options are. Well, Sal is a good candidate. The latest thing that went out is this telling what options they had, and we want to know how many have collected, how many have gone to their credit card companies, and have they been successful in getting anyone? So we're collecting that information right now.
Anybody else have any questions?
Boeg.
Boeg, region fifteen, region fourteen was our current Boeg system, I try to continue updating the board on this, we currently have nineteen students up in the program, it would break that fine. Nineteen bussing for, we now currently run three vans up to that campus for about eight thousand dollars a year, plus sixty-eight hundred dollars per student we have in the program. We continue to.
No reimbursement.
No reimbursement stated, we can have large interest in the program coming out of our, our middle schools, great, great. As you know, we did put a cap on the current region twelve program of fifteen students, so, and we are more liable, basically, we have committed to a three-year running average. One of the discussions Dr. Sal and I've had is the idea of possibly capping off at twenty-five students, toting the program up there, and maybe going to a central stop. If we go to a central stop at Danbury High School, for example, parents would have to shuttle their kids to the high school, and we would do one bus up to the high, up to Nanoway. The issue is right now, as you spread out these kids, to do what are almost as door-to-door stops, one bus can't service them all, the runner would be multiple hours to grab all these kids around town. So right now, we have three vans that are going around grabbing these students, require to bus them when they get enrolled into the program. So we're kind of exploring our options on this, because it's an opportunity we want to leave for our kids, open, but at the same point, got to at least put some cost parameters around it. So Dr. Sal explained maybe a positive capping with region fourteen at, at twenty-five students, and then maybe going to a central stop option out of Danbury High School at, let's say, you know, six thirty or so, those kids would be shut off.
Is that allowable?
It is allowable, we do have to provide bussing, it doesn't, it doesn't state in the law exactly what that means, so in other words, you can go door-to-door, you can go central stop, once you reply to the bus. It's an inconvenience, I'm not going to say, currently, there's, there's a, you know, a small white van who picks up the students today, so it would be a change, but as we do get the, let's say, a twenty-five number, you could be looking at another van going up there. We currently have nineteen students, only two are seniors, so in a case, if you don't have a lot of students that are going to come out of the program, so you're going to get nervous, and they're continuing to stay high. We see large interest, actually, a field trip going up there, about forty students out of Rogers Park and Broadview, they have a environmental club or something that's going up there. So I think, we need to somehow control the cost, but at the same time, still open the opportunity, so one of the options would be is, is a, one S T A would run the bus for us, which actually reduce the cost of eighty thousand, sixty thousand for next year. So if we want, I would like to at least explore the option of a central stop out of Danbury High School, only as at least a one way to look at some of the costs.
I think that's reasonable, I mean, personally, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, Bethel was a central stop for their kids, I did speak with them, we used to ride share these years ago, we had two or three kids up there, when I first got there, actually, ride share, I want to say Weston at one point, whether or not, making up the line. So it's, it's a cost we're looking at, we're concerned about, the region twelve core, and they have no one that's even going to come online, so it's kind of right now, we've got non-alongs, our current, so sixty-eight hundred dollars a kid is pricing, the state's putting a whole on us. They are, region twelve would like us to actually commit to, I believe the number was thirty students per grade level, and then coming up to a number of like sixty or seventy students, well, I mean, again, bussing cost alone, plus sixty-eight hundred dollars per kid, I mean, again, I hate to say it, but you've got to put some cost parameters around this. You could be looking at half a million dollars plus program going up there, so it's, it's a good program, but at the same point, the way the state's designed their funding, really handcuffs the districts. At that cost here, you're talking pretty, pretty large sums of money that can be going up there.
Another thing we need to do, Joe, is I think, I, I would recommend we do a satellite, otherwise, we're going to have to cut more seats for kids, but we should tell parents early, they will come to the board, they will, and they have legitimate concern, but you need to know why we're doing it. I just think we can, we thought about this last year when we were getting down to the budget, but it was too late to start telling parents after you get the budget, and it would be fair. We could, but we didn't, but this year, I think, we're going to do it as early as possible this fall, and say, continue your program, this is what it's going to look like, and why, to be fair.
Yeah, I think at twenty, twenty-five, you can still open up new seats to kids, and in theory, you'll start to have a cycle of students out of the program, right, as I said, now, you're juniors, you have like maybe six or seven juniors, so at least you'll have a nice cycle as kids move through. But yeah, the growth's been amazing, we've gone from like two kids to nineteen in four years.
Can we consider, is there an option as far as van share with neighboring towns? Like, if we, if gentlemen said, you know, some kids on South Street at Danbury, where you might be able to be picked up by Bethel?
We have, I, I've talked to a lot of the area finance directors, and their, their buses here are fairly full, or we're covering a lot of ground already in our runs, because my vans are fairly full, we're running. Bethel, I believe, has six or seven kids going up, so they're running just one van, where I've got nineteen on three different vans for time, sake of time. So yeah, we, we try to ride share as much as we can, absolutely, but if the opportunity, because of our size, hasn't really helped, and Bethel's numbers aren't small enough, if Bethel had two or three kids, yeah, grab those on the way out, it would be done.
Right.
But everyone says they have up, seven or eight, I don't know many that are running, so, yeah, we try to ride share as much as we can, especially everyone, you have to ride share with those, so yeah, we try to.
You know, I just take the process, unless there's some objection, we'll move our thinking along, okay, just so we can, along. Astrid program, Bill.
I have a, I have a handout.
Hello?
You have a handout in front of you, Delta program is like this, this is. We're really pleased with the way the program is working, we were able to recruit some really quality people, one of the astronauts is John Weber, our high school rep. We have Bill Russell Banner, who is our music lead, and we have the middle school level, and we have Matt Calamese from A I S, who's our elementary rep. So I don't want to insult your intelligence and read this to you, let me just quickly highlight some of the points, if you'll go to the first page. We have a shadowing component, we have mentoring principals, Dr. Montowski is taking care of Matt, E Thomas is addressing the needs of Jill, and Sandy is working with John in a mentoring capacity, you heard John speak to that this evening. And one day a month, we free them up for the day, and they spend the day working with the principals, so they really get, have a firsthand understanding of them. We have also paired them, had them develop rather a mini project that they have to implement, which is, it gives us an opportunity to chug a little bit, just as folks may turn around, say, being a board member is easy, you just come and sit here and nothing else. So some of the astronauts have already come forward and said, I didn't realize that when I told people to do stuff, they might not do it. Really? Yeah, and so they're learning how to, how to work within the system to help move people forward and, and also develop their own leadership skills. They have to create this problem practice, Matt is working in the area of mathematics, you heard Sal talk about our new elementary math program, it's a really big undertaking for us, it involves hundreds of teachers, so Matt has taken that on. We're looking at the issue of climate and parent engagement at the middle school level and student comportment, which is always a challenge for us, cyberbullying and things like that, and Jill has taken that on. And as the board knows, ACE is in turnaround status, so John has picked that up as his project, and we're very aggressively this year with this on a very comprehensive action plan. If you turn to the next page, it listed another component, a small seminar series, it starts off this month with Sal talking about district leadership and organizational coherence. A nice piece about that is we're focusing on the two big goals of the board, argumentation based on evidence and real-world problem solving based on twenty-first century problems that our students will be confronted with. Following Sal's presentation November, I'll talk about results-driven leadership, so it's not just about doing a lot of stuff, it's actually about having results that are desirable come about, those efforts that we work so hard on, our leadership. We have the issue of total cost of ownership, so it's one thing to buy a hundred computers, a lot of times, folks don't think about what happens when they break, what happens when the toilet cartridge runs out, we don't have data projectors. So Joe's going to be talking about the concept of, not finances, but what happens, what's the bigger picture at home and something, it's kind of like maintenance on your toilet compartment. We have the instructional development team in February, we're going to be talking about building capacity with instructional leadership practices, and how do you put a program like Dr. Rob's Dallas Math Program forward, and make sure it doesn't go away. Mrs. Press is looking on the elementary literacy initiative, and then the instructional timetable, how do you keep that in a robust manner over multiple years, especially in the public and all the times. Kelly has volunteered, I think one step, Kelly went one step backwards, I mean, thank you for that, probably April Fool's Day will do that. It's not just talking about sped services or special services, but rather the challenges that come with that, so the kind of the hidden side of leadership that comes on a daily basis, solving, solving problems, even special services. And last thing we're going to have of them, have a wrap-up with, which is kind of a reflective opportunity, let me say, what can you get out of this, and what can we need to do with you in kind of a year or two initiative. Winko, this, we just briefly paraphrase it, but the remainder of the document talks about Matt's project, Jill's project, and John's project, and they follow that results-based format, they have outputs, a lot of things that people knew, they have desired outcomes that come about with those outputs. But do those outcomes actually mean the results that we're striving to achieve? We'll keep you posted on it, we're just really pleased with this, we've been able to attract a lot of folks to this, and we type this writing with the minority recruitment initiative. We do believe that one of the best ways to do this is grow your own, this is grow your own principal, or possibly central office administrator, we'd love to get more minority astronauts in the program. So we're not only growing our own leaders, but we're also having a diversity of our adult population reflected, more reflected on diversity of our student population.
Thank you, somebody have any questions to back us? That's good, we'll read any last questions, thanks. I, um, oh, oh, my, yes, we have a lot of things to do, that's my, this world, we're all registered for the event, and it's all, one month, so it's very, very, very exciting, but I wonder, are you, I mean, two of us, it's, it's two in a room, right, Joe?
Yeah, two in a room.
Yeah.
Actually, four, I got a awesome rate on fourth, we have two beds.
Great, that's just.
In the connecting room.
I touch, okay, that's really, okay, it's like a night room.
Share bathrooms, too.
What did you say, share what? You got more, that's your discount, stuff you get here, okay, and that's, so that's all taken care of, but you have your tree, though, because I saw the girls' guys, so, I don't know. And did everybody get their, their package in the mail, with all the course descriptions? So. The book, the big book. It's the mail. No, it's, no, no, it's in the mail, in the mail. And, okay, good enough, okay, so everybody, you organized for that, okay, you organize this tomorrow, it's more street school, all right, how many people are going? Which is probably is, so, what can I say?
Build a globe?
Yeah.
Yes, tomorrow afternoon, one hundred and three to at worship.
One hundred and three at Martin Street, I think we're supposed to left in the middle of the.
Hours speaking, I also.
Okay, that's very good, okay, I think I know where that was.
Build a globe.
Build a globe.
So.
All right, okay. Okay, have those two beds tomorrow, and then we have, next Tuesday is meet the candidates, is a good call, last year, we want to start here, we really want to make sure we support when it looks like that we're staying, all sitting, we're sticking our thumbs out, and somebody that feels confident, right? Whatever, okay, that's, that's how we're supporting. And he's happy. All right, and then on the twentieth, okay, on Saturday the twenty-second, if some of us could please go to Danbury High School for the band January. The name has been restructured a few times, and, and I'm not sure what they're doing, but they are going to be January, and I've asked trust to stay this year, which is the first time they've reached out in a very, very long time. I personally will be going, it's from five to nine, it's at the high school, I'm trying to figure out where it will be, I'll let you know, because it obviously isn't like when we used to have the January, where, you know, it took over the whole of that, and how it been through that. But it's been five to nine, and we'll go there on first, so it's a different kind of journey.
Yes.
What is it?
Saturday, Saturday.
Yeah, but it's, it's, it used to go all day, into the night, and now it's just five to nine, so we can manage to go there from five to nine, I thought that it becomes, going to send it up, send it up first, but it's not, it's like that. All right, so that's him, and then what else is after that, that's it? Yes. That's all, and that's it, so if everybody could please let me know if you're going to come, I don't know, I'm going to make this step. And since I don't know what it is, or what it is, anything yet, because I don't know, it's a different bucket, I don't know, when I said off, it was very different, yeah. But, but they're trying to go, I mean, they're trying to get it back together, so it's, it's a whole different task. I mean, if the largest high school in state, it has to be the January, and they're watching that, all right, that's all I have to say. And can anybody hear me tonight? If you say no, I'm, guys, I'm going to.
You're, you're much louder.
Practice is just the way it is.
Might be.
You sound like singing. What did you say? Good, that was what I was going for.
Before we move on, there's a question, are there any issues that we have in the special ed?
That, not that I know of, I mean, I do, huh?
No.
Kelly, Kelly, you're up, Kelly.
I think it's important to know that the numbers are wrong. We're up a couple hundred students over the past three school years, about, about three hundred students, percentage of specialized students is currently approaching thirteen percent, we're not quite there yet. We were, you know, mid twelve percent grade, twelve-five a couple years ago, so we are definitely increasing, the state adds just fourteen percent, so we're still below that. You know, we're finding a big portion of our kids that are, that are adding to our broken numbers, or actually our kids that are moving into a district, currently being identified as special education. As far as our out-of-district placements, our numbers have maintained relatively consistent from last year, and we are, you know, about a fourteen hundred special education students, we placed about forty of them outside of our district. So compared to other districts similar to us, that's a pretty low percentage, and I think that's due to some of the specialized programs that we think look great. My concern kind of looking forward is going to be increasing the number of teachers in the department to meet the growing demands of, you know, our students in the department. We've added up a handful of teachers over the past few years, but definitely not consistent with the vast number of grown up students. But overall, sorry, Joe, but overall, like, you know, most things are going very well, like, with the special education department.
All right, board of presidents, anybody do anything you think could be on topic?
No, just briefly, we committed, the student evaluation committed, we met earlier, and I want to thank all of our. year, and I want to thank all of our, I don't want to holler, I want to thank all of our members who have taken part on their schedule to just meet and go over the form, and hopefully at our next meeting, we just have a good information session about what we have decided about. I have some telephone that I have to do to Kate, and I will get back in contact with everybody soon, but thank you for taking time out of your schedule and to come, and we have a short, good information for you, thank you.
Okay, I'm counting to, anybody else? Did you tell your teacher name? Bye.
I wanted to start, start them up, I mean, last week, new PPO stuff.
So what are they doing in special?
We're doing empty, so I'm actually coming up, and we're doing for, small entities, you know, go with your own number of names. You know, fundraising and all that stuff.
And he went to the west side of the school.
What was that?
Good, new, new PTO president, he's, he's, he's going on a lot of new initiatives, fundraising, 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 it was, it was good, well-attended, yes.
It was?
Yes.
Anybody else have a question? No, number? Cap?
Yeah.
All righty, that's it? We, we are going to executive session, so if I have anybody.
Executive session.
I have a motion, going to executive session.